Welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting, the September 17th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Dara? Green? Councilmembers, Dara and Green absent, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting September 4th.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All nay. Motion carries. I do have a few proclamations to read this evening. I'll start with one, the Constitution Week 2018 proclamation. It reads, "Whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2018 to be Constitution Week in Cedar Falls and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, signed the 17th of September, 2018." I believe we have someone here to say a few words about this. Welcome. Make sure that microphone's down. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for allowing us time to be here. My name is Susan Laquet, and I am Chapter Regent for the Cedar Falls Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. With me is Barb Gregerson, Vice Regent, and Javerna Mulligan, Registered. The Waterloo Chapter merged with us about six years ago. DAR is a nonprofit women's service organization dedicated to preserving American history. We were founded in 1890, and the Cedar Falls Chapter was chartered in 1901. The mission of DAR is to promote historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Membership is eligible to any woman 18 years of age or older regardless of race, religion, or ethnic background who can prove lineage descent from a patriot of the American Revolution. September 17th through the 23rd is our Constitution Week. In 1955, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a resolution. This week of observance for the foundation of the American former government was signed into law by Dwight D. Eisenhower on August 2nd, 1956. George W. Bush officially declared the inception of Constitution Week in 2002. The commitment of the National Society of DAR is to encourage study and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17th, 1787. The Constitution is a living document that assures each citizen of the freedoms Americans cherish and appreciate. As members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, it is our responsibility to keep our ancestors' legacy alive by promoting the ideals they fought valiantly to give their descendants. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. The next proclamation is for September as Hunger Action Month. It reads, "Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in the City of Cedar Falls, and whereas the City of Cedar Falls is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to provide additional resources that citizens of the city need, whereas Cedar Falls is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness, whereas the nearly 19,000 individuals in the Cedar Valley rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually, and whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 6.7 million meals to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region in fiscal year 2018, and whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement and efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore I, Mayor Jim Brown, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the City of Cedar Falls, and I call this observance to attention of all its citizens, signed the 17th day of September, 2018." I do believe we have someone here for that? Sure, come on up for a couple minutes. Welcome.
Evening, council members. My name is Brian Hellesell, and I'm the Marketing Manager at the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. So as a leading organization fighting hunger in Northeast Iowa, we appreciate that all of you are acknowledging and addressing the issue of hunger by declaring September as Hunger Action Month alongside of us. So there are over 18,000 people who routinely experience hunger in Northeast Iowa, and specifically Black Hawk County, 5,000 of which are children, and because all of you have decided to not ignore that as an issue, we've been able to do a lot in the last year, a lot the last 36 years. Last year specifically, we were able to fill the backpacks of Black Hawk County children with nutritious wholesome food over 63,000 times, so that's about 125,000 backpacks of food. We filled fridges and cupboards of over 5,600 county homes and households. We made sure that over 1,100 seniors weren't forgotten about when we delivered over 28,000 meals to them. And we did this not by luck, but through 82 pantries, community meals, schools, churches, other organizations whose food that we source every year, and that's just Black Hawk County alone. So on behalf of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, I'd like to thank all of you for declaring September Hunger Action Month and for your continued funding of our pantry program through CDBG funding. It truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. The next proclamation is Fire Prevention Week. It reads, "Whereas the City of Cedar Falls is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Cedar Falls, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas Cedar Falls residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Cedar Falls residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas Cedar Falls residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place, and whereas Cedar Falls residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan and are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Cedar Falls Fire Rescue First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Cedar Falls residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. We have Chief Boswick here to say a few words on this.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's John Boswick. I'm Fire Chief in Cedar Falls. I wanted to thank you very much for the proclamation. Your firefighters are going to be around October 7th through 13th. Look, listen, and learn. Reminds us to look for places that fire can start and try to mitigate those, make sure that we don't have fires starting. Listen for that smoke alarm. If you don't have one in your house, call the fire department. We'll be glad to come out and install one or check it, reinstall a new battery for you, whatever. And look for two ways out of every room, whether you're in City Hall or whether you're at your home. Know two ways to get out and to be safe. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. There is a fourth proclamation. I'd like to just recognize and attest the support that September 23rd through the 29th be observed in Cedar Falls as National Rail Safety Week. So thanks to you all for being here for the proclamations. Moving on to Item D, is there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is Special Order of Business. E1 is a public hearing on proposed submission of the city's FY 17 and 18 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the CDBG and Home Programs. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All nay. Any written objections, Madam Clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go to oral comments, I believe I, who's here to? Karen, sorry about that.
Right, this is an annual report that we have for the CDBG program. It's basically a summary of what's been accomplished for the last year, and so you can see in the report the details of those programs. The city has a rehab and repair program and aid to agencies, and it's a bit of a retooling year this year, so you'll see that in the report as well.
Great, thank you. We'll open it up for public comment this evening for the public hearing. Hearing seen, then declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is Resolution Approving the Submission of the City's FY 17, 18 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for CDBG and Home Programs. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is Old Business. F1 is Pass Ordinance 2931, amending Chapter 29 of the Code of Ordinances relative to Design Guidelines in the Central Business Overlay District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, comments? Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is New Business. G1 is the Consent Calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests not to be polled for such reason. Any such request from council? From the public? I'll summarize the consent calendar. Item A is Receive and File the Resignation of Donna Bresch, Bash, excuse me, as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'd like to thank Donna for her service to the city. Item B is Receive and File the Bids Received for the Cedar Falls Public Library Remodel Project. C is Approve a Request for a Street Closure on Park Drive on September 29th. D is Approving Applications for Permits and Licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item 2 is a Resolution Calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests. Any such request from council?
Item J, please.
J?
Question on I?
I? Anything further from council?
Q?
Q?
Q? Any others from council? From the public? I'll summarize the Resolution Calendar minus those items. Item A is a Resolution Naming Official Depositories for the City of Cedar Falls. B is Approving and Authorizing Submission of the City's FY 18 Official Financial Report for Streets. C is Approving and Adopting the Rate of $3.89 per 1,000 taxable value for the downtown Cedar Falls SMID for FY '20. D is Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Services Agreement Relative to Agenda Management Software. E is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a 28E Agreement Relative to Providing Consolidated Dispatch and Communication Services. F is Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Access Agreement for Solid Waste Collection Services Relative to Rethuse Services. G is a Resolution Approving and Accepting the Low Bid for the Cedar Falls Library Remodel Project. H is Approving and Accepting the Contract and Bond for the Library Remodel Project. K is a Resolution Supporting a Grant Application for the Lake Street Trail Project and Confirming the City's Commitment to Maintain the Trail. L is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of Six Agreements for Professional Services Relative to Use of Community Development Block Grant Funds. M is Resolution Approving and Accepting a Lean Notice and Special Promissory Note Relative to the Rental Conversion Incentive Program. N and O are Resolutions Approving Central Business District Overlay Site Plans. P is Approving and Authorizing Execution of Purchase Agreements and Easements in Conjunction with the Westford Street Reconstruction Project. R is Setting October 1st as the Date of Public Hearing on a Proposed Ordinance Granting a Partial Property Tax Exemption for Construction of a Warehouse Edition. S is Setting October 1st as the Date of Public Hearing to Consider Entering Into a Proposed Agreement for Private Development, Conveyance of Certain City-Owned Real Estate, and Payment of Certain Economic Development Grants. And T is Setting October 1st as the Date of Public Hearing on the Proposed Rezoning of Property Located in Southwest Corner of 58 and West Ridgeway Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the Resolution Calendar minus those three items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving back to Item I is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of Supplemental Agreement Number One to the Professional Services Agreement Relative to the Henry Property Traffic Impact Study Peer Review. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion or questions from council?
I just wanted further explanation as to what exactly this is.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There is quite a large development proposed on the southwest quadrant of Ridgeway and Highway 58, and with that, there is a traffic impact study proposed for that. And this isn't something that we would do in every case, but due to the complexity of the traffic, the amount of traffic it's going to generate, we just felt it was wise to have a peer review of that traffic study. It will be a very, well, it's quite a significant study, a lot of complex traffic issues, so that's what it's for.
So is it kind of like a second opinion on the first one?
Yes, that would be correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, John. Any further questions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item J is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Memorandum of Understanding with Intercog Relative to the Preparation of a Federal Recreation Trail Grants Program Application for Lake Street Trails. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, questions or comments from council?
I was just hoping for some background on it.
Background from staff for the trail project?
Yep.
So the Lake Street Trail Project has been in the city's unmet needs for a while, but then two years ago, it made into our five-year program. We have it in for fiscal '21 as a project that we would be looking to do, which is paving granular trail with an overlay of asphalt. We recently learned about this possibility for federal recreation trail grant money, that there's a little bit larger pot of money for maintenance-related projects in the grant round this year, and so we explored whether this might be a good project, and it sounds like it could be a good fit. So at this time, we'd like to move forward with a grant application. If we received the grant, we would probably find out around January, and we'd be proposing to move this item up in the CIP so that we could take advantage of the grant dollars. So right now, we're looking at what are the dollars that we need to apply for to include design services and helping with the construction of the project.
Is for, as far as, if the grant doesn't happen, then this project stays on CIP for fiscal '21?
Correct.
Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item Q is a Resolution Setting October 1st the Date of Public Hearing on Proposed Rezoning on Property Located at the North End of Lake Shore Drive. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Before I open it for discussing for council or for the public, please keep in mind that comments towards rezoning at this juncture is not germane. This is strictly to have the public hearing on the rezoning, and clearly, comments would be germane October 1st if council approves the public hearing. I will open it up for questions or comments to council?
Yeah, my question was simply since there's been some discussion regarding the impact from the water, I was wondering, will we have a impact study or report regarding any water impact on surrounding areas prior to that hearing?
So at the rezoning hearing, there will be some discussion about stormwater management and how the, and some topography of the land and how the surrounding properties are zoned. And then subsequent to that, there'll be, there's an application that the Planning and Zoning Commission is currently considering for the preliminary plat for that, and there will be much more detailed information with that preliminary plat, which will have to show how they will manage the stormwater on the site, so it will not affect surrounding property owners.
Good question. Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, does council have any items for referral this evening? Hearing and seeing none. Move to Item J. Does council have any updates? Hearing and seeing none. Item K is to ask for a motion to move to executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code 21.51J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate following public forum. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item L is a public forum. Speakers will have up to one opportunity to speak for five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here this evening that'd like to speak on public forum? Sure. Just name your, state your name and address before you speak would be great. Make sure that microphone's right there.
Barbara Lounsbury, 2120 Tremont. On April 17th, 2017, U. Mayor Brown proclaimed May 2017 to May 2018 as the year-long Cedar Falls Authors Festival, designed to reclaim Cedar Falls heritage as a rich seedbed for writers. The festival's aim was to celebrate all Cedar Falls writers, past and present, with special attention to our five nationally-known bestselling writers, Best reader Aldridge, Ruth Sukoe, James Hurst, Robert James Waller, and Nancy Price. I'm here this evening to thank you and the city, and to give you a very swift follow-up report. The festival began in May 2017 with a tribute to Robert Waller, followed by a screening of the film The Bridges of Madison County, and panel discussion of the novel versus the film. June was devoted to bestselling novelist Ruth Sukoe, and included the dedication of a new sculpture in the Hurst Sculpture Garden to honor Sukoe and her writer-husband, Cedar Falls native, Ferner Noon, both as writers and patrons of the arts. Later, Neann Nichols performed the one-woman play Just Suppose: The Life of Iowa novelist Ruth Sukoe. July 2017 belonged to Nancy Price and included a screening of Sleeping with the Enemy in Serle Park, surrounded by the houses important in that novel. The next day, hundreds took part in the tour of homes, which included Price's home on Iowa Street, where she began Sleeping with the Enemy, and the three homes on Tremont Street that she looked at across Serle Park and placed in the novel. You and I, President Nook and his wife, opened their home on campus to the tour so people could see where Nancy Price spent her teenage years. September focused on James Hurst and included the reissue of the 1972 North American Review tribute issue to Jim, and programs on 23 newly-discovered Jim Hurst poems, and on his poems turned into song. In October, a new driving tour guide was created of the Best Reader Aldridge sites in the city, and huge numbers took the tour. Then the Cedar Falls Historical Society presented a cemetery walk where Cedar Falls' early settlers, who appear in Aldridge's novel Song of Years, stepped out from their gravestones and told their stories. This was followed by a screening at the Oster Theater of Cheers for Miss Bishop, the 1941 Hollywood film of Aldridge's novel, which, as you probably know, is about a teacher at a teachers' college. With 2018 came the 13-part Cedar Falls History Writer Series that offered programs from Ken Liftock's Cedar Falls and the Civil War, to Scott Kowalti's book on the Mark family murders, and Jim Vulgarino's Tunis Speedway Chronicles. Across the year, more than 60 events took place, attended by more than 3,500 people. Lasting, permanent festival creations include the original Gary Kelly festival artwork, which now hangs in the Cedar Falls Public Library, a new large rock and plaque in Serle Park honoring Nancy Price and the many writers who lived and wrote around Serle Park, new book illustrations from Nancy Price in the permanent Hurst collection, red geraniums here published, these are the 23 new Jim Hurst poems published, a plaque honoring Best Reader Aldridge in her namesake park in North Cedar, the permanent Cedar Falls Authors Festival website, cfauthorsfestival.org, and the electrical upgrade in Serle Park, which will make possible future film screenings in Serle and musical events. None of this could have happened without the support of the city, especially the Cedar Falls Visitors and Tourism Bureau, the Cedar Falls Public Art Committee, and Mark Riplinger, as well as the Cedar Falls Community Foundation, the city's public library, Hurst Center, Historical Society, John Lucic, and the Cedar Falls Community Theater, and you and I's Rod Library, and North American Review. We want to thank you all and everyone in the community for making the Cedar Falls Authors Festival a success. Cedar Falls, as you know, was once called Sturgis Falls, and it has also been called the Lawn City. Our city has produced and continues to produce more writers than most towns in Iowa. We should call ourselves also the City of Writers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to get a copy of your text?
Gladly, and while you're being so kind, I would like to thank the members of the planning committee, Rosemary Beach, who is really the founder and driving force over here, the other members, which include Jan Anderson, Mary Bremer, Scott Kowalti, Sherry Dargan, Kim Manning, and Mary Taylor, who did, were the planning committee. So we will send it to you.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much. Ms. Pop, I see you. Want a public comment?
Hi, my name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street, and these are my views alone. Recently, a book entitled Smart Growth Manual has appeared in these chambers in relation to a type of zoning the city is implementing called Form Zoning. So I decided to follow along and see what it was all about. My copy was $5.18, and I hope the city got a good deal on theirs. Now let's see what my $5 and change got me so far. Let me share some of the quotes from the book. "Growth is directed towards existing infrastructure. Affordable housing and potentially undesirable land uses are distributed equitably. Productive farmland as well as natural assets are protected," end quote. Well, I'd have to agree with that. Smart growth also is based on mixed-use neighborhoods. And again, I quote, "It is compact, as dense as the market will allow. It is walkable. It is diverse, and it's connected seamlessly to transit, roadway, and bicycle networks." Well, that makes sense, but I don't have a sidewalk, and I used to, and I chose my house because I used to live in Chicago. It was compact. I walked everywhere, and I had access to mass transit. Now, I like my space. Now, I like my space and the peace and quiet. Growth priorities, and I quote, "Direct investment to smart growth priority areas," end quote. Now what are those areas? The smart growth approach, and I quote, "Requires a clear prioritization of growth from smartest to dumbest." With number one being the smartest, urban revitalization, number two is urban infill, number three is urban extension, number four is suburban retrofit, number five suburban extension, number six, new neighborhoods on existing infrastructure, number seven, new neighborhoods requiring new infrastructure, and number eight, new neighborhoods in environmentally sensitive areas, end quote. Well, if we follow this approach, the smartest area to start with would be University Avenue. And the city certainly wouldn't be entertaining the development at the end of Lake Shore Drive. New development in environmentally sensitive areas are considered the dumbest idea, at least according to this book. Other interesting lines and concepts in the book, well, adopting smart growth. And I quote, "Municipalities are warned that attempting to modify a conventional code into a smart code is difficult, if not impossible, as the two models are incompatible. It is typically neither necessary nor politically possible to completely replace existing regulations. Smart codes are conceived to run parallel as an alternative," end quote. The planning process includes a designed charrette, bringing in outside consultants for an extended uninterrupted work session of seven to ten days or more to get input and design and plan these neighborhoods. So how much does a charrette actually cost? Are we taking away the responsibility of our Planning and Zoning Commission and city planners and outsourcing it to strangers? And who is our form zoning expert in the city? As this process unfolds, I continue to have more and more questions. How does ex parte apply to form zoning? How can the city adopt a separate code for one area and continue to apply code that directly contradicts it? For example, smart code advises against big box stores, but yet the city just rezoned another property that is anticipating one. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has continually asked for clarification of current ambiguous code. Is form zoning and the Smart Growth Manual a way to skirt around an unpleasant topic? I'll leave you with one last quote from the book. In part, it says, quote, "If you're looking for arguments against the current pattern of development, books such as this gives you resources and explanations about what to do," end quote. Is the city that unhappy with the current progress and form of development, or is something else forcing its hand? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. I would make a quick comment, as council knows. Over the next year, council will be taking a look at potentially vision and goals first. It was presented, I believe, a meeting or two from you, Karen, at committee, probably projected to take about a year to look through all the different options. And so I did buy, the city purchased those books. I gave copies to council and to P&amp;Z and Crucial, or Critical Staff, if you will. And it's simply a tool, as I mentioned to all of you separately in various discussions. It's a tool to be used, and we welcome all sorts of different tools as the city looks to foster the zoning changes that might or might not come. So, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Sorry I've been absent. Forty-two, forty-one Larry Wykoff, proud citizen of Cedar Falls. Been to too many, or been to a lot of grandkids' baseball soccer games. My grandson scored the only two points Saturday, so I was very proud of him. Okay, I know you're not going to believe this. Sit back. Couple of positives. East Park Road, thank you very much for resurfacing East Park Road. It was getting to be very crumbly, and I know you go down that road too, Mr. Mayor, and so it was very, very good welcome. Main Street, coming over here tonight, I, you know, I knew it was going on, but it's been final. The patches that you put on there probably saved Cedar Falls at least eleven million dollars, and we still have sidewalks on both sides, we still have people walking, we still have bicyclists. All the things that were there before are still happening at an eleven million dollar savings, at least. I don't know what, you know, it costs, but it's got to be at least eleven million dollars. All right. So we got a few roundabout issues. I was wondering if the cement truck that went off the road here last week, if somebody could comment on what the speed of that guy was, and, because it had to be related to speed. Couldn't have been because of the design of the roundabout. Second thing, Cedar Heights and University Avenue. There's a roundabout there that I guess apparently, I don't think it was in the paper, somebody hit it. And I had to go around twice to look and see where it was scratched. So with your permission, I finally found where it was hit, and I guess the city of Cedar Falls, according to my sources, they want twenty-six thousand dollars to replace that boulder. Really? Come on, surely we don't have twenty-six thousand dollars to replace a boulder or a rock that might just get, be hit again. So if I could get some follow-up on that, I'd appreciate it. Then the final thing is, University Avenue used to be very heavily traveled, and I know there was traffic studies done to justify taking University Avenue from six lanes down to four. Has anybody driven on University Avenue now? You can go out there practically any time of the day, and there's hardly anybody driving on University Avenue. So maybe there should be a study to see how low the volume has gone since the reconstruction. And finally, got one more. You're all doing a very good job, and I can't say enough that everybody, I don't want your job, and I was kind of wishing Frank would be here tonight so I could tell him personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Anyone further for a public comment this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we'll now adjourn to executive session. Thank you.